This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
And Mr. Butcher were not present.
That's correct. Commissioner Bowles will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you have given us, health, safety, community, and family. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our community with integrity, leadership, and compassion. We pray for the health and well-being of our community members and families. We pray that your love would be a comfort to all, and we pray for wisdom and guidance during this meeting, as well as unity and partnership. We thank you for all you have given us in many different ways. In God's name, amen.
Amen. When we meet in St. Louis, face America, and then to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Soon to be divided, seen as simple, perfect friendships among the united cultures. Thank you, Commissioner Bowles. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with what changed. We would like to table resolution 2022-008 until January 24th.
Yes.
And add a discussion item of the Main Street water line cost increase to tonight's meeting in non-action items.
Both were made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bowles. There is no further discussion. There is no further discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead. Moving on to, uh, phone call.
Hello, Ian Kimbrough. I just wanted to invite you all. We are having a public forum for the debate for the candidate's round decision commission. February 22nd, and Randy Pettigrew has agreed to moderate, and he asked that it not be, you know, he's, I guess he did, he's been doing several of them for different, he knows, factories. And he said some of them are really skewed. He doesn't want that. We don't either. You know, we've got two really good candidates. We thank Robbie Roberts and Bernard both, you know, running, and we want to get, you know, both of them in. With Liz and everybody else out there, we want to have a legitimate, you know, just discussion around, you know, the commissioners and what people want and what, you know, what's going on about. We've been lacking by all of y'all to be there too. Town Hall will be Tuesday, February 22nd, six o'clock. Yeah.
Oh, February, okay.
February. Yeah, we thought that's pretty close to the, you know, time, and it's right before all that, but, you know, if anything, you know, we want the citizens of Loveyton to get involved. You know, we want people to care. We want people to show up and ask questions and, you know, show concern, and serve for their community and be what's, you know, get involved and vote and take part. So just inviting y'all all to be there, please.
Thank you.
That.
So, any other public comments? Moving on to discussion items.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner's the only discussion item on the agenda for tonight is the revised cost of the Main Street water project.
Crystal.
Commissioners, I need you guys out of the front row. I'll have people in the crowd here that will help us if we have any questions on any of these costs. Uh, but when you're looking at the total there of the 700 and something, uh, the state is going to be paying, I wrote down there on your copy, the 224. And the city, uh, the cost is going to be approximately on this first change order is going to be the 513. Uh, this change order is not just, um, for one little section. It is actually for all the work from Main Street down Avenue D to commercial, where the water line and all that was not actually in the original bid. Uh, so we've had to add that work, and then of course throughout this, we've found out we don't have enough valves for control of the water, so we need more, and those valves are expensive to prepare. Uh, so we do need better control of our water line. Um, so that's why the valves have been added. Uh, so that's work on E. There's extra lines across at Love Street that were in the original bid documents. I'll stand for any questions, and like I said, the, the engineer is here, and so are some of the guys from Constructors. And the same.
So was the original cost?
A hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
No, one million, two hundred and sixty. Right? That was the original, yeah. One million, two hundred and sixty thousand was our original contract within M V O D. So this cost would be added to.
So we're at one seven now.
And thus far, per capitalizing, we have 1.2 million allocated for, for this project, so we'll probably most likely, since we have a four-year period to seek out the, the half million. But this is just one change order. Most likely, might be a few to come because it's two-year, two-year bids.
Right. No, 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 I get that. I just, for some reason, I had, I was like, $600,000, but.
Eight hundred, I think you would think. Yeah, the initial was 600, then went from eight hundred to one point two million.
All the numbers, so.
Yeah, the initial was 600,000, then it went from up to 1.2, and you did capitalizing funding for that. Uh, but at least this is additional cost, so we'll be seeking capitalizing funding in the next four years to cover this cost, most likely, and the cost that comes. But we don't have to pay this out. It's a four-year payout. If it's in four years, we're going to have to pay.
Yeah, after the construction's over, you have four years to pay it up.
Yeah, so it's about six.
You have any idea, Crystal, how many valves we're booking at?
Okay, so I know there is, uh, there's three additional valves right now in the change order, um, that are the large ones that are the biggest prices, but, you know, your other valves on your 12 and eight-inch, you know, they're pretty expensive too. Um, and I know there was, we had the two 16-inch insert valves that had to be added, uh, onto, from the original contract, um, to, let's see, to eight-inch insert valves. That's on your page two, the individual cost of those is on the second page. Uh, there's a wide variety of different joints and valves, air release valves. Once you look at that list, it gets quite.
Another change order here, is that just for materials or is that?
No, that, okay, so there is labor, and all that is in that with the, with the change order, um, and the, the extra traffic control. The state did take, uh, they, that's why the state was taking so much of that, because the traffic control plan and the traffic control devices and all that are actually going to be paid for by the state, even though it's an additional cost to this contract. Uh, the state felt that that was public safety, and that was more what they were concerned with, so they were taking on that cost. We'll just be paying for like, uh, remove and reset of the devices, correct? And like detour paving, I know that's a very expensive hit, but that wasn't in the original contracts. When we dig up the water line, we can't just leave dirt on the ground. We have to put some type of pavement over it. The detour paving is to where the state, or where the contractors put that down, the cost to remove it again is already in that bid price. The cost to maintain it during construction is in that bid price, so that's why that price is kind of way up there, most likely, but.
I have another question. I know when James was here, we were talking about some of the work being done as far as with the street project and with the water lines and everything. And he said that there would be COVID funding for anything involving water for the city. Do you know anything about that or not?
Not yet, and that's something me and the mayor need to get with the new financial director and see what kind of funding was in that packet, and if we can get any of that.
I know, uh, Commissioner Bowles, on the one point, the 2.4 million that we are receiving, uh, half was allocated for infrastructure, and the other half was what, uh, base for losses due to COVID. So we, we can utilize some of that for infrastructure, maybe, and we still have that, only have not just the 1.4 million. It's still in the bank, but we have not utilized that funding. If, if that's the only source, but there is other sources.
Yeah, I, for what he said, I thought there was other sources that we could seek. That's why I'm asking. I don't know, I'm asking.
And that's where we need to look into, you know, when we get the new city manager and the finance lady gets her feet in the ground a little bit better, uh, that's where we can look into what type of additional funding we can use to.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mind, construction, can you step up and introduce yourself and make a deal, keep you guys, uh, sort of, introduce yourself to Commissioner Bowles.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Tega from Constructors, I'm the project manager, and, uh, here to represent Constructors.
Yes, my name is John Law. I'm the project manager from the Mexico Department of Transportation. Well, we oversee the full project, part of the bench, so he's the same.
Hi, good evening. My name's David Royball. I work for Pettigrew and Associates, uh, the design engineer for the water line specifically on this project. There is another engineer on the project, so it's a little bit confusing, but I've been working directly with Crystal on, on the revised plans. If you have questions.
Any of these gentlemen, I'm just curious as far as our retention, uh, that we're digging over there, how are we coming along on that? Who would you talk to?
Constructors.
Currently, we're approximately about eighty, eighty-five percent complete on the funds. We have had some issues. We're hitting some really hard clinging, or click, or clinging, and, uh, that's what's holding us up, but right now, once we get a little closer to being a hundred percent, we'll start on the channel and work our way back to Avenue D and Commercial.
I noticed that the traffic was kind of slowed down and stuff, that maybe you were coming to completion on it, but it's just that it ran in the issues.
Yes, so at one time, we had 15 trucks hauling material out.
Right.
But now we don't, we can't use belly dumps anymore because of the bigger soils and rocks that are coming out of there, so we had to go to hand dumps and dump trucks.
And so I didn't.
Can you elaborate on your ongoing project right now on Main Street?
Um, currently, we are setting up wall barrier on Main Street from Avenue A to all the way to Avenue D. We should be done with concrete wall barrier tomorrow. We'll have our last load in. So what we'll do is we'll start removing the pavement, existing pavement, so when Ferguson comes in and starts their installation of waterway for the city of Love. Everything will be ready and set up for not only their safety, but public safety.
I have a question. How deep is that hole out there? Do we come China yet or?
Well, you know, at the deepest area from top to bottom will be nine feet.
That's unusually existing grade, I mean, but it's ten, ten acre, ten acre.
Yeah, I was, I was, in my mind, I am digging a lot deeper, so.
Yeah, but it's ten acres.
Yeah, there's, there's to be that. It'll handle anything that, that comes its way, any monsoon, any rain, it'll handle all of it.
I just, like I said, in my mind, we were at the water table, so. Let's dirt go out of there. No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions for, Crystal? I guess this will come up, Crystal, on our next.
Well, as soon as the state gets the change order in, we'll just kind of keep it on, uh, the agenda, so we don't miss it, uh, because we do have only 10 days to respond once they send that official change order.
Thank you, Crystal. Moving on, I still have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance 584, an ordinance of the City of Loveyton uprising the execution of a project participation agreement, providing $15,000 funding to the Loveyton Economic Development Corporation for economic assistance for the market retail assist, analysis, strategic planning, retail recruitment, and development.
So. Made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bowles.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, this item came up whenever Commissioner Bowles had a question about a check that was issued to the EDC for retail recruitment. After research and reviewing of the ordinance and the project participation agreement, we noticed that there was a clerical issue, and the ordinance was never signed, or the PPA was never signed. Uh, we also came in, um, across a conflicting issue of the ordinance and the PPA, on the PPA, one, let me find it for sure. It, it does say that it will be a three-year contribution for the city to pay for it. And then on the ordinance, it does say that it will be for the fiscal year of 2021, and we did talk to Patrick about it, and he reviewed both of them. And he, um, he did say that we would need to bring it back to the commission to review and basically just say that it was approved, it just wasn't signed. It was just a clerical issue back then. It was approved on June 22nd, 2022, 2020, sorry. I, I attached some minutes in the packet showing that it was approved.
I know when we originally discussed this, it was one year agreement.
And so if you look at, um, recitals, do you have the PPA?
I agree.
On, uh, recitals on, on B is where we saw that it, it was going to be a three-year financial commitment. And I, I believe that's where last administration saw that it was going to be a three-year contract for it.
Okay, and, uh, another question I have is, uh, what, what fiscal year are we talking about?
This was approved to be in fiscal year 2021, but since it was a three-year commitment, and it's not to exceed 15,000, um, and that was for fiscal year 2021.
So we already paid for fiscal year 2021.
But it, yes, sir, and it's a three-year commitment, and this last check was for 10,000, and it, and it would be coming out of fiscal year 2021.
Economic development.
Yes, out of.
It'll be towards fiscal year 2022?
No, 2021, because it's still, it's still in this budget.
We already paid the 15,000 for 2021, right?
We did, but on the PPA, it says it is a three-year financial commitment. So that's why we did see that $15,000 check right when we first approved that ordinance. And now, back in, I believe, November, that $10,000 check that we issued to EDC came up, and you had a question about it. And so it was a three-year commitment, not to exceed 15,000.
But the check has not been.
It has not been cashed yet, since it wasn't, the ordinance and the participation agreement was not signed.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I went through our vendor, sort of, vendor list. That's what I was wondering. Who approved it, the three-year, the one we did, right?
It, it was, it was submitted by the old treasurer. It was submitted and signed by the old treasurer. And he has author, he had the authority to approve anything over 15,000.
Because he was looking at it three years.
Yes.
He's looking at the three years, since it was already, both were three years, and that it was already been issued.
Yes, anything that, yes, anything that comes over 1500, the, uh, financial director advisor has to approve it. And so he, he's the one actually made, at the time he made the charter and approved it.
See, because my question is, and I know when we first went through this, that the project will be a minimum result, at minimum, result in the creation of two new businesses and a minimum of six full-time jobs employed by one or all the new businesses located in the city of Loveyton within two years of execution of this participation agreement. So my question is, and I could be wrong, I understood this was on a yearly basis, that we agreed on it, and we had the option in the third year, if none of this criteria was met, to deny it. So that was my, that was my understanding from James. I remember I was sitting where Scotty was, because Scotty wasn't here that day. And James was sitting where Chief is, and that's what he said. So I was just wondering as far as how this went through that B.
So the, the third, the third, yes, sir, the third year will not be until 2023, so we technically approved it on that 2020 date.
Right.
And then, um, any, I mean, we approved the participation agreement, so whenever we do get this invoice, per the participation agreement, the ordinance, we are able to, um, process that check. And whenever the third year comes, that's when we'll reevaluate, and you can deny or accept to proceed forward.
I, I, so I was wondering how this was figured in there, if we're agreeing to a three-year term, that is this still going to be held as far as we're going to be able to look at this every two years?
Yes.
Robbie, do you have any insight on that, sir?
I don't have anything.
He's still on the board. I'll put you on the hot.
Sorry, I'll leave you there. Um, I don't know about the clause on the three-year. I don't remember that. Rest of it, as she's pretty much stating, is, was accurate. I wish everyone was here. Maybe, I don't remember whether the third year was an opt-out or an opt-in, and I'm sorry, we, you know, that's a year and, more than one night's sleep ago, and I know this has come back, uh, there's been several questions coming about it lately, and, and I'm sorry, I just don't know any more than that. I could tell you about thirty.
If, if I may, on the terms of participation agreement, it does say it will be effective upon execution of the agreement and terminate at the end of the third year of the project. So at the end of, um, 2023, fiscal year 2023, it'll, it'll end. Does it begin, or 2023 would be 2024?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, number six is where it does say the end of the third year of the project.
Anyway, as I understand that if it's a three-year agreement, which I'm being told that it is, that in two years, because I really don't have anything telling us what has transpired from our contract here, as far as if we have any businesses, or if we have any full-ten employees or anything. I have nothing in front of me, so.
And I would say at this point, and this is just speaking from my knowledge of it, that we've neither added at this point, which we're, and I always get confused when 2021 starts for the city and when, I mean, the, so, uh, but at this point, I don't, I know we haven't added any new businesses or personnel, but I don't know how that will affect come termination of the contract. Obviously, they felt, and of course, this is through the Lee County EDC, not, I mean, it's not like the city is, is hiring these, so it was to help them out. And I don't know if, uh, it's, uh, retail's.
Retail strategy.
Strategies, or this one strategies, because we had the retail coach. No, I think it is retail coach.
Yes, sir.
We have retail strategies, and so I didn't even know that they had promised, or not promised, but, but in there that there would be two new businesses and at least six jobs. So actually, that's news to me. I was thinking, well, we need to hold them to the fire a little bit. Yes, they provide leads, they, uh, continue to reach out to people, but we haven't, uh, the EDC has not, uh, received anything to this point of any kind of commitment, so.
And again, and again, I want to thank the committee for, I understand when they went in on it, it was to help out the city, you know, so we weren't paying such a substantial amount to be able to go out and look for businesses and that, and I appreciate that.
Sure.
I would just like to see what.
You'd like to hear a little about that, Matt?
I'd like to see what's going on, so, I mean, I can understand that our fundings that we're putting towards it, we're getting something from it, so that's all.
I think we should request, if that's the case, then I did request everyone to give a, a report, at least, we get, we're supposed to get a monthly report. Um, they upheld the majority of them, I'm going to say they've been every month, but, uh, at least a quarter, maybe, give an update to the, like, in your job discretion, it could be monthly or whatever, uh, at least what they provide to us for our board meetings, so. I mean, that would be a reasonable request and, and actually a good, a good idea.
Yeah, they will definitely help us, so.
I'm sure.
Or Robbie, you could take it to your board, make that request, that she gave us a report on.
Absolutely, just, yes. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So as far as this here, when will we be, that next check, will that be for when?
Mayor and Commissioner, the, the check that was approved in that last round of vehicles has not been cashed or has not been done, anything, so once this is approved, then they'll be able to go forth with that, that current check that was already sent out.
Ten thousand.
Yes.
And again, that'll be for this, because fiscal year 2021 was already paid.
Yes.
So this should be going towards 22.
Yes.
Yes, that's 22. Twenty-one and twenty-two, that was 2020 and 2021. This is 2021, 2022.
Yes.
Fiscal year.
So it'll be this.
So this is what we're, this is for 2021, 2022, fiscal year, which we're currently in.
Yes.
And the last check was 2020, 2021.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I got all my, my dates, because our fiscal year starts in July, or July, so that would be your starting date, so. This is the, even though we're 22, we're still in the fiscal year of 21.
And we've already paid for 21.
It was 2020, 21. Yeah, July, July, 2021, 21.
So we paid in 21, and then when we're paying for 21 and 22.
Yeah.
It's a little confusing. I think I got it straight.
See, the thing is, the, uh, check going out in August of last year, so that's why I'm questioning that for 15,000, EDC. So that would have been 2020, 2021.
Right, which would have been the fiscal year 2020. I think we paid late on that for some reason, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think that is.
Because that's during some of the, uh, what would you call, a question about budget practices or something like that. I don't, we had some confusion.
We did, we redid our budget, so some of the stuff we will see on our audit report where we, we didn't pay, uh, we paid into 2021.
That's what I'm.
2020.
Yeah, we were, we were, we paid for 2020 and 2021.
So this year will be our second year, 2021.
Yes, yes, that's what, that's what I'm understanding. So we paid, so in the fiscal year 2020, we didn't pay until start of our 21, yeah. And then, so now they're trying to play catch-up here, and that way our fiscal be on time this time, which, and then next year will be the discussion year. That's what I'm understanding. So that sound right to somebody?
Yes, sir, and that's because of the treasury, uh, resonation in the treasury, new treasury takes over, you know, office votes, finds that we still have some stuff to pace it out, that, and that's where.
Okay, I'm good.
There is no further discussion. There is no further discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor, you're leaving.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint, appointment of city manager, Fidel Martinez.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy to appoint Dr. Fidel Martinez, the city manager position, seconded by Commissioner Bowles. There is no discussion.
After great thought and great debate between the two people on the top of my head, I think you will make us the best city manager of the two. Both were very highly qualified.
Both were very highly qualified. Um, it was a toss-up and a lot of prayer, and like I said, the two people on my head argued a long time. So, um, this is the best decision I've come to. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think you will do us the best job.
I accept they were two very good candidates, the residents. They answered some hard questions, but they answered it. So it was a tough decision, so. Again, so, made our decision, trying to do the best for the city of Lovington. That's all I can say on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. No further discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes. Do I have a comment? Oh, it's going to be there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a German.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bo. There is no discussion, any further discussion.
Go on.
No further discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mayor Truett?
Yes. He needs a turn. Thank you.
Thank you.